I'd like to open the meeting tonight. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is March 8, 2022, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I give the invocation tonight, I would just ask that I know my fellow members of council and staff and everyone will share our concern for what's going on in Ukraine. And so if we could just keep those poor people in our minds as we work here tonight with the benefit of a democracy that is protected and nourished and theirs is under assault. So, dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I will call on Mr. Kleipas at this point for a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from February the 22nd, 2022, for both the regular council meeting and the workshop meeting. I find them to be in order, and I move for their approval.
Second? Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. How may we call the roll?
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Abstain.
Mayor Lerner?
Yes, okay. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council operator, TV operator, Mike Sporani. Mike, thank you for your assistance. I assume you're up there tonight? Yep, there he waves. Okay. Let's see. We do have proclamations and special presentations tonight. We do have an appointment to the Partners for Healthy Youth of Jody Ball, term ending 12/31/24. May I have a motion to approve the above appointment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, we will now move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight, we do have a public hearing tonight, and it is PC 22-001, zoning text amendment. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed amendments be approved and the Planning Commission's certification packet is made part of the record. At this point, I would like to invite city staff to give a presentation. And I believe that is Dave, standing right there.
Your Honor.
Dave Roller, thank you.
Your Honor, you need to gavel, open the public hearing, please.
Okay. Is that all I needed to do? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Every year, the City of Kettering's Planning and Development Department monitors the zoning code to look for things that we can improve. This year is no different. We're always looking for things that we can do better. For instance, we're always on the lookout to make redevelopment simpler. We are always looking to expand flexibility and make the code easier to use for developers, residents, and designers. We're also looking to maintain a really solid foundation of best practices to keep our city running smoothly and to maintain the city's attractiveness to potential investment in residence. Sometimes during a project or a review that we're doing, we unearth a provision that just doesn't make sense as applied. We also might find a standard that falls short of achieving the goals that we've set for ourselves and for the code. And sometimes we also find loopholes or gray areas that really need clarity. And this is just such an occasion. Throughout the last year, we documented all of these issues and compiled them into the proposal that you had before you this evening. We've prepared a brief presentation of the proposed changes in a summary format detailing each code section, and they appear in the order of their appearance within the code. As you stated, the City of Kettering Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the selected revisions, and I am prepared to be as detailed as you need or desire within any of these proposed revisions. So please feel free to stop me as needed as we go through the presentation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. So, beginning in Chapter 1135, within the permitted use table, this one's a really straightforward minor issue. During the last time we did this, we had some revisions to some of our industrial standards. One of the things that we did was we removed salvage yards from our code as a permitted use. However, we did not strike it from the permitted use table. This was an oversight on our part, so this would simply correct our oversight and remove it now. The next item that we have is index and patios in Chapter 1139. This was actually pointed out by a homeowner this last year. Our code as written doesn't allow something that we've always allowed, and that is patios and front yards. We've been allowing them as common practice. However, our code as literally written does not allow them, and that's not something that we want to continue forward, so we want to correct that. That certainly wasn't the intent. So this proposed language does correct that issue. On the next slide, yeah, thank you, Amy. We have residential parking. Our current code has been really confusing on this. The intent of the code is to prevent paving over front yards in their entirety and turning them into parking lots while simultaneously allowing people to expand their driveways and park in them. That's commonplace. Everybody does that. But as written, the code does not allow them. That was a mistake, and that certainly wasn't the intent either in this part. So this new language accomplishes that. This also leads into the next one, and that is the reduction of minimum number of spaces for residential parking. Right now, the current number for single-unit dwellings is two required spaces, and for multi-unit dwellings, it's one and a half. And what we found over the last few years in practice is that that really isn't a true minimum standard. It's more of an ideal. And so what we want to do is reduce that number, and that's going to help us encourage better use of land, reduction of pavement, subsequent stormwater runoff. And also, it helps us to remove some barriers to housing equity because it eliminates some of the costs associated with developing these uses. Chapter 1147, which is the next slide, is landscaping and buffer yards. There's just a few things in here. First, really straightforward fence materials. Anytime we're having a new installation of a chain-linked fence, we are asking that that be factory-coded. That reduces maintenance over time, and it also helps to increase value. The next thing we have is basins, planting on the slope of basins. This really has to do with an engineering best practice, but it came to light during a recent project, and that is that detention basins shouldn't have plantings on their slopes. It leads to increased maintenance costs, and it can also lead to flooding issues. What happens is the roots of the plants, they tend to get exposed, think of like along a creek or riverbank, and those exposed roots can make mowing difficult to maintain the basin, as well, the soil starts to become loose, and it can erode and clog the system, leading to flooding issues. Next, in the landscaping and buffer yard section, we have the telecom boxes, specifically fiber optic boxes, as many of you may know. Fiber optic infrastructure is moving through the Dayton region and specifically the south suburbs right now, and they have the potential to end up on private property. Thus, they could have a negative visual impact to homeowners. So this section establishes screening standards that would be meant to obscure those installations. And something to keep of note is that this would only apply to new installations. This would not apply to anything that's already out there. And that's also important to note for a lot of these standards. These don't have, anything that's in place now is not subject to these standards. This is stuff that is, as it's being added, new or redeveloped, that these standards would apply. So it's just something to keep in mind.
I have a question. So if, which it will, you're right, we are going to be seeing that show up in our residents' front yards, quite frankly. So now we're going to force our residents to have to put screening around it?
No, these would not be, this would not be applied to residents. This is for the telecommunications installers to follow.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's not retroactive.
Not retroactive.
I have a question. Mr. Duke?
David, does the screening specify whether it is hard or landscaping?
There's a mixture of standards depending on the context where it is located. So it's meant to, the standards are meant to help it kind of blend into the background so it's not prominently on display. But again, that depends on the type of the background that's there. So, you know, we wouldn't want somebody to paint something dark green if everything around it is concrete and a fence, then it's going to stick out.
No, what I'm suggesting is can it be greenery, trees, shrubs, et cetera, rather than hard surface, a fence?
Certainly. It's actually a mixture of both, the way that it's written in there. It's the color of the cabinet itself or the equipment, as well as any required screening that may go around that cabinet. Depending, and that's dependent on size.
I'm trying to get to the question of, is there a choice? Or my preference would be to see shrubbery, trees, greenery, rather than a fence, if you get my drift. Is there a preference for that in the code, or does the person have a choice and go with the cheapest, you know?
Could you put it on to, I think it's for the Elmo? I think it's number, is it two?
Two.
I'm sorry. Let's enter here.
There it is. Flip it around.
Flip it. Whoa, there we go. A little too close.
Easy enough.
There we go.
That's my kind of technology.
That is like a.
Paint and rece.
Juggling act, even that to line up. That's the actual language of the proposal. It's written as a flexible standard, but the actionable.
I need to check.
Correct, yes. It's the standard that's here in red.
Right, blocks themselves.
Yeah, so they're required to be painted or coated, and then it talks about how they would be maintained over time, be free of graffiti, different things like that. We do have standards that are in our, that the engineering department has prepared that coincides with this, that does have screening requirements, that's for greenery. So what's in here is a flexible standard that allows us to conceal the.
This is the box. This is the box. I'm talking about what goes around the outside of the box. That's what I'm talking about. That's not in this at all.
No, that's not in here. However, the actual screening that's in here is actually already in the ordinance for the other items that are up here. So there's screening of a minimum six feet and higher, one feet higher than the area to be screened, whichever is greater. That's already in the actual language for the other things that would be, that people would introduce on the site, like generators or equipment. So this just talks about that if you actually have one of these.
Right.
You have to do the, you have to do the greenery, and you have to paint it out to conceal it to the background.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, proceed.
David, I have a question. You specifically are talking here about telecommunications equipment.
Correct.
Does this apply to the gas spots that have those barriers around them? I guess it'd be safety barriers of some kind that they've just gone out and painted a brilliant yellow color on around the city?
If they're, yeah, this particular item is just dealing with the telecommunications boxes. That's what this is dealing with specifically. If that's something that you would like us to look at, we could certainly take a look at it.
So there's no screening regulations for those, then?
Ah, okay. Yeah. It depends on where they're located. So if they're located in city right-of-way or any kind of utility easement like that, that's not something that this applies to because that's, this deals with private property. So if you're located on private property, there are screening requirements for those types of items. However, there is additional things that we have to look into whenever we have, like gas installations like that. They require certain things, have to be so far away from them. There's other state rules and regulations that we have to look at as well. So I can't really speak that confidently on stuff that's in the right-of-way, but if you're located on private property, then you are required to do some screening stuff. It's encapsulated in this code section.
I'd just be curious, pick one in and see what it's on. I would guess it's in right-of-way, right?
I would.
For those gas lines, yeah.
I would guess that as well. I couldn't answer with a lot of confidence, though, but I would guess that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. I didn't see any other questions at this time.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay. Moving on, we have plant material specifications. We have a very minor revision of this. We are proposing to just concise, more concise language within that table, reducing that down. It's really just a small housekeeping issue, but the intent and the actual standard stays the same. Finally, within this section is a newly proposed section that's plant diversity. That's something we haven't done in the past. Requiring plant diversity can help protect the city from future pest, disease outbreaks among our plant species. Best example of that would be Emerald Ash Borer, and then in longer ago history would be Dutch Elm Disease. By making sure that we don't overplant any single one species, it helps us to be better protected with those disease outbreaks or pest outbreaks. Something to be of note with this is that this standard would scale upwards and also would not be retroactive. This would only apply to new development. So small businesses aren't really as impacted. If you have a small site, small business, you're not going to have to do plant diversity. That table shows that. It shows that you don't have to do very much, but as the site gets bigger, as the development gets bigger, you are required to do more plant diversity. So that way, we're really kind of, we're taking care of the issue, but we're not having a real strong impact on anybody who's just trying to get started, get redeveloped, get into town. Chapter 1149, architecture. This is also really a small issue. During a few recent projects, we realized that our minimum height clearance really wasn't a true minimum. We had it at nine feet. It really needed to be reduced down, so we're proposing to reduce that to eight feet. That would apply to things like awning's canopies, balconies. Again, this is for new development as it's coming in, not anything that's already in Next, we have Chapter 1151, signs. The first thing we have on there is ground signs. Recently, as I stated before, we have had some revisions to our industrial office-oriented Business Park District where we took on some of our industrial standards and made them more modern. Unfortunately, we neglected to modernize the signage that went with those uses. So, you know, in the past, when we had industrial signage for things, it was really just small placards that said, you know, shipping this way, receiving that way, the office is over there. Modern industry, modern office and research complexes, they don't really behave this way. They want more signage. They want to be able to brand themselves better. And so we're proposing to increase the allowable square footage to be more in line with what they desire and to be in scale with their larger sizes. We have temporary wall banners or temporary signs. These are in residential districts. The table that we had before established standards for minimum square footage, I'm sorry, maximum square footage, that was meant to encapsulate all of the wall banners or all of the signs that were present on a house. But the way the table was written, it was ambiguous. It looked like it meant each individual sign, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear as we've been enforcing that. Your Honor?
Go ahead.
David, could you please define temporary? What are, I know of some businesses that want to put these up in their windows. What's temporary?
Just to be clear, these are standards that are for residential.
Only residential.
These are residential properties. So this is, but temporary, as we usually define it, is 30 days. But generally, temporary means that it's not going to be there permanently. I mean, it's, in general.
I'll add, so here, this is the question. So I put out a sign, and I'm having a fish fry at my church, so I stick it out to 30 days. But I'm a resident, and I decide to put a sign out that I support my police department, and I decide that I want it to sit for six months. That applies?
So the way that we do temporary signs is we don't have, we don't have a limit of 30 days in the code. What we have is that the sign is temporary. You can basically go out and take that temporary sign and just pick it up and move it, and that's a new temporary period. So in essence, if you wanted to, you could keep a temporary sign indefinitely, but, and some people do, some people don't. But the way that we define, the way that we do that is that temporary signs, the reason we have a distinction is that temporary signs are thought to wear themselves out over time. And we don't want to have signs that are worn out, being displayed indefinitely. So there's a time period of what we say that signs shouldn't be posted longer than that. We ask that they be removed after a certain time period. But we don't keep track of when that time period begins or ends. It's really, it's something that we don't go after, per se, but temporary is just really defined as not permanent.
Go ahead.
The next thing we have is a more comprehensive overhaul of our campus and large site signage section. Some examples of who is considered a campus would be Kettering Business Park, Miami Valley Research Park, our own Rec Center would be that, also Kettering Hospital. In this current revision that we're proposing, basically the entire table is being replaced. We found that the current standards were really hard to enforce. They didn't really allow any flexibility over time, and so we are proposing standards in which they're much simpler to enforce, and they really respond better to future changes, much better than what we currently have. Another thing that we didn't allow before that this would all, that this would allow in the future is gateway features. Gateway features might include things like branded public art, clock towers, arches that would be allowed to be displayed at the entryways to these campus areas. Last on the list in signage is prohibited locations. Currently placing a sign on a roof in Kettering is prohibited. This proposal clarifies that the standard would apply to roofs as well as mansard and awning roofs. Kettering has enforced this section this way for the last several decades, but the language that we have on the books is a little bit odd and clunky, so this revision simply reinforces the original intent. So finally, we have Chapter 1153, procedures and enforcement. During a conditional use application this last year, we found that we actually didn't have any standards for amending conditional uses in the code. We've had a standard way that we've done it, but it actually is not listed in the code with a prescribed way of doing it. So we wanted to make sure that we did have those standards in there for how we have been doing it, although we've been doing it without formal direction from the code. And finally, and I promise this is the end, is we have some definition revisions. In the last section, we have proposed some definition revisions for dwelling units, principal facades, parking islands, and peninsulas. First there, we have dwelling units. As current, as we have the current standards, dwelling units are intended for permanent occupancy. So this clarifies that, that it's for permanent occupancy, not for short-term occupancy. Short-term occupancy is anything less than 30 days. Second, we have principal facades. As we have the definition now, the definition is overly broad. It goes out and tries to do too much. That's not how we intended it to be. It really should be more narrowly focused so that narrows that definition down, so it only does what we intended. And it's how we've been enforcing it, but it was brought to our attention that it was a little bit too big in what it was doing, or could be doing, that we weren't doing. Parking lot islands and peninsulas, this is also a project that we had recently. We had somebody come in and propose some parking lot islands that met our code but produced a totally ridiculous result. And through working with that applicant, we were able to get them to do what we would conventionally know as a parking lot island, get that development to happen, but we wanted to make sure we closed this loophole so that we didn't have the potential for abuse in the future. And that's really the end of the presentation that I have for you. To review, to summarize, the Planning Commission found that the proposed zoning text amendment met with the purposes and intent of the zoning code as outlined in Section 113104 of the zoning code, and as has been stated, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a 5-0 vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Your Honor, I've got a quick question. Back on 1147, on the fence materials, just as a definition, protective coating, you intend it to be like simple galvanized, not that it has to be a vinyl-coated or something like that, correct?
I believe that it is, as the code proposes, that it would be a vinyl or plastic coating. The galvanized, what we found is that that does, that can scratch off a little bit, and it does rust a little bit sooner than the coated material.
Even though that's been the traditional methodology for generations, right?
Certainly.
Anyone else?
I do want to ask, when did we last change zoning code? Didn't we have major rewrite of the zoning code so many years back? Tom?
Last major revision of the zoning code was in 2015.
2015.
So that was seven years ago.
Okay. Have we made changes like this since 2015?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So do we have a schedule for these? Because these accumulate over time, and then you come forward with new legislation. Is there a scheduled timeframe you work on? This seems like a lot of stuff, you know?
It's not necessary.
I think somebody's building up a big job jar of things that need to be changed. I'm just curious about scheduled timing on it.
It's not a formal schedule, but you're right. We kind of build these, a jar of these changes up, and then when it gets so full, we'll bring them forward to make a modification. So generally, it's about once a year.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. At this point, we will take comments from those members of the public who are present tonight and wish to be heard. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Each person may speak only once. Please do not repeat material that has already been covered. Before you begin, please state your name and address. At this point, I'd like to call for anyone, oh, mic went on. Call for any person who wishes to speak in favor of the amendments. Okay, not hearing anyone. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the amendments? Who is opposed to the amendments? Okay. Not seen any. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. The hearing is now closed. City Council will take this matter under advisement. Legislation amending the zoning code will be considered at a future city council meeting. We are going to move to legislation at this point. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speaker must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. It appears that we do have someone wishing to speak tonight, but please state your name and your address.
My name is Sterling Abernathy. I have comments about Agenda Item 6, which is approving the automated license plate reader system in Kettering. I have several concerns. First, mass surveillance. The proposed automated license plate reader system is not just another tool for the police department. department. It's mass surveillance technology that photographs and identifies every vehicle passing by its high-speed computer-controlled cameras. It stores the footage in a central server on the Internet. It automatically sends out alerts when scanned vehicles match preloaded hot lists from local and national agencies. It allows authorized users, not only Kettering police, to search stored data using their own phones and computers. And it's a secret system. Flock requires the features, functionality, and performance of the system not to be shared outside the police department, except for information already known to the public. The statement by the city manager in the Dayton Daily News about a month ago that, quote, "We're not going to be scanning every single license plate," unquote, is wrong. Mass surveillance means the system collects and stores information on you regardless of whether you've committed a crime. Less than three-tenths of a percent of the vehicles stored in these kind of systems are connected to criminal activity or vehicle registration issues. Second is high error rates from outdated hot lists and inaccurate scans. One study in California.
You can't hear him. Sir?
Mr. -- Mr. Abernathy. Is your microphone on?
Mass surveillance means the system collects and stores information on you regardless of whether you've committed a crime. Less than three-tenths of a percent of vehicles stored in these systems are connected to criminal activities or vehicle registration issues. Two, high error rates from outdated hot lists and inaccurate scans. One study in California found that 37% of all hits from fixed readers were misreads. Drivers have been pulled over because a reader read their license plates wrong and erroneously tagged the vehicles as stolen. In one instance, a Colorado woman and several children were detained and handcuffed face down on the ground after such a system mistook their SUV for a stolen motorcycle from a different state. Three, misuse. There are many instances of misuse of these systems across the country. For example, a Washington, D.C. police officer pleaded guilty to extortion after looking up the plates of vehicles near a gay bar and blackmailing the vehicle owners. In Florida, police officers use databases to search romantic interests. A former female police officer in Minnesota discovered that her driver's license record was accessed 425 times by 18 different agencies across the state. Four, privacy, civil rights, and civil liberties. Some of you have claimed that the system does not impact privacy, that it is just like someone standing on the roadside watching cars go by. That's false. A person cannot record all vehicles in two lanes of traffic, going up to 75 miles an hour night and day, and store the information in a central database searchable by agencies all over the country. The truth is that automated license plate readers are used to track and record the movements of millions of ordinary people, even though the overwhelming majority are not connected to a crime. Fifth, data sharing. The police can choose to share Kettering information with other agencies, but as a part of the vendor agreement, Flock has a license for worldwide perpetual use and further distribution of Kettering scans and data. This license is part of the contract; it is not opt-in or opt-out. Flock runs its own network called Talon. The Talon network allows law enforcement agencies nationwide to track a car as it drives from coast to coast, assuming it passes through American cities that have Flock cameras. So when your car is scanned by Kettering cameras, it's not just Kettering police that have your data; it's anyone Flock passes it on to. It also allows Kettering police to track your vehicles outside of Kettering by searching other agencies. Prior to approving the system, the council should involve the public. There's been little information about this shared with the public. And that means formally notifying citizens, describing the technology, how and where the system and data are used, and how privacy and civil liberty risk will be addressed, and then request and consider public comment. Don't just pretend this mass government system is just another tool. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abernathy. You might want to wait a second, see if there's any questions. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Seeing none. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council tonight? Okay. Not seeing them. We will now move on to ordinances in second reading. There are no ordinances in second reading, so we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Fisher.
Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing the signature of Randall R. Harper as an authorized signature for all negotiable instruments, checking accounts, certification of funds, et cetera, required or made by necessary by law as relating to his duties and responsibilities with the Finance Department of the City of Kettering, and rescinding Resolution Number It is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow our new Assistant Finance Director, Randall Harper, to be an authorized signature on our negotiable interest, negotiable instruments. Randall is replacing our current Assistant Finance Director, Marcy Baer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Schwederman? Okay. Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase equipment through sealed bids, negotiated quotes, or a cooperative purchasing program. The estimated cost is $2,137,000. It is budgeted into two different accounts requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to purchase capital equipment. These are our more expensive items in the capital and equipment budget for 2022, such items as the tub grinder at $290,000, a dump truck at $213,000, and a few other items, including a medic for our fire department at $370,000. Originally, we had intended that these items we would purchase utilizing our American Rescue Plan funds. After investigating the use of those funds, we determined that it would be more efficient to continue to purchase these equipment out of the general fund and our street department fund. So this resolution will allow us to do that, and then included in the supplemental appropriation will include the funding for these purchases. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase bunker gear for the fire department. The estimated cost is $38,832. The amount budgeted is $38,832, and this is being requested by the fire department. I move for approval.
Second.
At this point, Chief Robbins.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the fire department to purchase structural firefighting gear for our members as part of our annual fire gear replacement program. This will ensure our members remain in compliance with the NFPA standards for bunker gear usage in IDLH environments. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of the chief? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Priority One grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Division of EMS, and this is requested by the fire department. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Chief Robbins.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the fire department to accept the Priority One EMS grant administered by the Ohio Department of Public Safety. These grants are given to fire departments who report patient care records directly to the state of Ohio electronically. They're usually roughly $2,000 to $3,000 in value and may be used for EMS training and equipment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Chief Robbins? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Flock Group Incorporated for automatic license plate detection equipment and related services. The estimated cost is $27,500. The amount budgeted is $25,000, and this is being requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Chief Robbins, Chief Protsman, I'm sorry.
Robbins can answer if you want to. Your Honor, this request is for the utilization of 10 Flock Automatic License Plate Detection cameras for employees to use for law enforcement purposes. It should be noted that these cameras do not give officers the right to stop or detain anybody in a vehicle; it just gives them the right to identify them and then verify it through other law enforcement databases before taking any actions. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of the chief?
There's been a lot of, yes, there has been a lot of talk on this resolution in particular and these cameras, and I -- several of us have really gone over the information. I feel satisfied that our questions have been answered and that we can -- I'm going to vote that we should move forward with this, but because so many things have been written and said about it, I just wanted to note that, particularly in response to the public comment and some of the media's questions or highlighting this issue, that it seems that Flock is not going to be using the data in appropriate ways, but I am glad that we're going to have a six-month review of this in order to ensure that, and that we do have readers for license plates at this point, and this apparently is more efficient.
That's correct.
And I believe you mentioned that if police use this for personal reasons, then that's a fireable offense.
That is correct. We do have policies in place and for other law enforcement databases that are used inappropriately, which this would go with. That is a fireable offense and also a criminal offense.
And this also is not used for ICE or for speeding tickets?
That's correct, or red lights.
So hopefully, at the six-month review, we'll see that this does reduce crime and hopefully reduce costs for the city for that reason. And that's all I have to say or ask.
Okay. Thank you for those questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Duke?
Not a question, just a comment regarding the vote. This has been, as Mrs. Hall has suggested, a controversial issue in some communities that has been, and we had a speaker this evening pointing out lots of problems, at least as he saw them. I'm sorry he's not here to hear our comments, but in my opinion, the Flock camera is a database system that will be utilized after a crime or an incident has occurred within our community. It's not used before an incident, tracking people, so I feel very comfortable with that. It is reactive to the incident, not ahead of the incident. The system is a tool that our police need to help protect our community, and therefore I will support the resolution.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Your Honor. I've got a comment. I intend to vote for the resolution for many number of reasons, one of which is we tout our police department as Ohio's finest, and as a council, we owe it to them to give them the most modern and efficient tools to use to solve crimes. And I think our citizens expect that of us, and I'm convinced that we have the proper safeguards in place, that it won't be abused. And I think we would have a hard time looking one of our fellow citizens in the eye and say, "We did not give our police department all the tools they needed to solve a crime that affected them," or a hit-and-run accident, or something along those lines. And lastly, to be part of a network of our fellow cities in the area, to cooperate with them and have a multi-city network that can be used when needed. And again, I'm satisfied beyond a doubt that Chief Protsman says there are checks and balances that are needed, and I intend to fully support the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a 2022 Livable and Age-Friendly Communities Grant funding through Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. Estimated cost is $10,000. Is requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Steve, where are you? Over there.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to submit an application to the MVRPC for their 2022 Livable and Age-Friendly Communities Grant funding. The funding for this opportunity is being provided through MVRPC by the Dumont Health Dayton Fund at the Dayton Foundation. It is a $10,000 grant to support the pursuit of an AARP Livable and Age-Friendly Communities designation. This designation is a multi-year planning effort focused on recognizing and enhancing age-friendly and livable aspects of communities. If awarded, the grant funds will be allocated for a community survey and accompanying listening sessions and focus groups, as well as critical research, data analysis, and technical assistance to create an action plan for age-friendly, livable community initiatives. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Bergstresser? Okay. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution amending Resolution Number 10677-22 regarding the Smithville Road Resurfacing Project, which is Wilmington Pike to North Corporate Limits, City Project Number 02-134F. The estimated cost is $724,239.86. The amount budgeted is $575,000, and it is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bergstresser, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize an additional expenditure of funds in the amount of $149,239.86 for the Smithville Road Resurfacing Project. This project was put out to bid earlier this year. It came in over budget by that amount, so we are requesting additional funds this evening to move forward with the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bergstresser? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for design services for Indian River Park Seasoned Shelters and the Garden Plaza Project. Estimated cost is $50,000. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize design services at approximately $50,000 for the Shelter and Garden Plaza Project that is associated with the funds that were donated by the Lathrum family for improvements at the Lathrum Center. We'll have a later appropriation for the matter as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for a point-of-sale system for Frey's Pavilion. The estimated cost is $100,000. There is no amount budgeted for it.
What we're looking for there is, we frankly don't know, so we're going out for a proposal to see what's out there for point-of-sale systems for the Phrase Pavilion or an entity of that, that size and operation method. So we'll go out, we'll see what's available, and we'll bring a recommendation back to city council at a future time, once we've had the time to evaluate the proposals we've received. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Could you clarify for people what a point-of-sale?
Yes, Your Honor, I can. In this instance, point-of-sale is referring basically to how we process tickets and concession transactions at the Phrase Pavilion. The software would go a little farther than just a normal credit card reading machine or a scanner, but it would allow us to do, for example, inventory control, so that we do not have to do manual counts at the end of the night. We would have an automated count from the point-of-sale system.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have a question? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and administer grant funding from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Forestry Division for the purchase and replacement of trees throughout the city of Kettering. Estimated cost is $30,000, and requested by Parks and Recreation. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to accept and administer the grant for $15,000 for maintaining our tree canopy in the city. The grant does have a match. We'll utilize our already budgeted CIP program funds for tree replacement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend resolution number 10684-22 regarding removal and replacement of trees on city-owned properties. The cost is $160,000, and this is being requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution actually amends the previous resolution that allowed us to go out and spend the funds in our capital improvement plan related to our tree maintenance and replacement program. We are expanding the definition of maintenance, or adding the definition of maintenance for this, as what we do also as part of this program is not just remove and add trees, but we also maintain trees or prune trees to give them longer life. So we're just coming back to add that word to the resolution so we can continue to expend those funds in the 2022 capital improvement budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to lease space in Building 46 to the Kettering City School District Board of Education. Requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Schwederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to enter into an, into a lease with the Kettering Board of Education for approximately 20,000 square feet of leased space in Building 46 at the Kettering Business Park. Building 46 is the building that has our Kettering Municipal Court, so this would be an interior section of the building to the far south of the building. Again, a little over 18,000 square feet to be utilized by the school district as warehouse space, and it's a seven-year lease with renewal options. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31 of 2022. And the net transfers are in the total of $3,721,881.33, and I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Schwederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. You mentioned earlier in the public hearing that sometimes we have jars that we put things in, and then every once in a while we come before city council. So we have a number of items for supplemental appropriation tonight, including down to the .33 cents. The first item will be the previously mentioned capital equipment resolution, where we're moving 2.1 million of capital equipment from the ARPA category to our regular general fund and Streech Department. We're also appropriating $100,000 for the Phrase Point-of-Sale System. We are appropriating $950,000, which is related to the $1 million donation from the Lathrum family for improvements at the Lathrum Senior Center. We are carrying over grant funds from the previous year that have been unspent and need to be carried over into the current year, our 2022. We are doing that for the electric vehicle charging station grant funds at $16,826.80. We're also doing that for the KAI mural grant program fund, which is related to the mural at the Rosewood Arts Center, and that appropriation is $38,054.53. We are appropriating an additional $330,000 for our traffic signals replacement Phase Three project. This is a 79% federally funded program with the remainder being a local match. The additional appropriation is necessary, necessary to award the project, and there will be a general fund transfer of the same amount, $330,000. We have a supplemental of $150,000 for the Smithville Road Resurfacing Project. The bid came in by about $150,000 more than our budget, and that is all I have for the supplemental. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
That concludes our resolutions for tonight. We do have one ordinance in first reading this evening. I think Mr. Clepass?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance tonight in its first reading to provide by mutual agreement for the adjustment of the boundaries between the cities of Kettering and Oakwood, Ohio. It's requested by the city manager's office. First reading.
Okay, Mr. Bergstreser, would you like?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance in first reading this evening is to mutually agree to adjust the corporate boundaries between Kettering and Oakwood. The proposed, the proposed corporate boundary adjustments will occur on the north side of Dorothy Lane, along portions of Ridgeway Road and Fairmont Avenue. These adjustments are minor in nature, and they will clearly, more clearly define the maintenance boundaries of Ridgway Road and Fairmont Avenue between the two jurisdictions. In addition, there's a small portion of the property located at 2765 Ridgway Road in Oakwood that will, that will be moved from Kettering to Oakwood to allow for more logical corporate boundary along the north right-of-way line of West Dorothy Lane. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none? We don't, that's first reading? Yeah, okay. We now move to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will at this point move for our manager's report for a community update. Mr. Schwederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you this evening. The first is just to announce that we are still accepting applications for the mayor's award for volunteer service. We're accepting those applications through March 15th. You can receive or fill out a nomination form at ketteringoh.org, or you can contact our volunteer office at 296-2433. I guess it's March, so we can start talking about what's coming to the Phrase Pavilion this summer. We have a number of shows that are on sale listed on your screen tonight, or a few of those. As always, you can buy tickets at etix.com, or you can come to Phrase Man Fair and visit At Town and Country and visit our shop there, or you can purchase tickets by phone at 1-800-514-3849. Our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts team are looking for team members, team members for this summer, and specifically our summer camps team. If you're interested in applying, you can do so online at playkettering.org, and we will also have a hiring fair for interviews on Saturday, March 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. So we encourage folks that are looking for summer employment to visit the website. Just a reminder that we have upcoming council meetings. Our regularly scheduled council meeting will be March 22nd, and then on March 24th and 25th, city council will be participating in a two-day off-site retreat. And then, just not necessarily a reminder, but as you know, we occasionally meet on the 5th Tuesday for a joint meeting of the Kettering School Board and the Kettering City Council. We, we will not be doing that on March 31st, but we will likely attempt to schedule and have a joint meeting with the school board on the 5th Tuesday of May, so May 31st. We'll keep you updated as we progress on that. The community development team and the economic development team here at the city have put together a minority business microenterprise program, and so we're looking for small businesses that would like to apply for a grant from $500 to $5,000 for business equipment, inventory, fixed assets, marketing, business promotion, and other necessary items. It does require attending some classes, the first one being tomorrow from 9:00 to 10:00 here at the city's recreation complex. If businesses or individuals are interested in obtaining more information about this program, they can contact our economic development manager, Amy Schrempf, at 296-3342. The city of Kettering's income tax filing deadline is April 18th this year, and as always, our staff at the Tax Division will prepare your returns for you. If you'd like to stop by their offices here at the north building at 3600 Troyer Road, or you can call them for assistance, all the forms are on the website. And Your Honor, I believe that's all I have for tonight's community update. I'd be able, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schwederman. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question for the fair tomorrow, whether Mr. Schwederman or Amy Schrempf, how many people have already RSVP'd for that? Do you have a head count on that?
Yes, we had about seven or eight who RSVP'd as of 5:00 today, and a quick check of my phone, we had one more during the meeting.
Excellent.
And we have some that have an RSVP'd, but they were contemplating attending, and we will take people at the door.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions? Not seen any? At this point, if anyone out there, well, it's anyone there, who'd like to speak before city council, you can come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address, and I don't think there's anyone here to speak tonight, so. We will now move on to council reports. Who wants to start?
I can.
Go ahead.
So I have two items to share this evening with our residents. I attended my first, first suburb meeting, and it's a great regional collaborative group. So we got all sorts of cities that are sharing lessons learned and working together to solve problems together, and that was an excellent forum that I went to, and I'll be doing that monthly. Second thing I want to uplift is one of our nonprofits, We Care Arts. They hosted Leadership Dayton Alumni Group this past week, and I will honestly not be able to take one penny for my piece of art that I painted, so I'm not good at all. So I have.
Mine sold for $400.
Oh, mine, mine's, I hopefully will stay on the kitchen table. Oh, wow. Kitchen table and for, until the plant dies, and then, hmm, hmm, you know. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. I believe that many of us, as Jackie mentioned, her committee just started off, two different committees that I'm on had meetings in the last couple of weeks. One is the Sister Cities Committee, which most of us are well aware of, plans even though the manager didn't have Spasnoch June 15th listed as coming to the Phrase at the other night at our meeting. All the planning for that event started taking place, and so we look forward to the fact that we're going to order a bunch of ponchos to be there, because we know it always rains on, on Spasnoch. I had to mention that, but we're, we've got to break the odds, and you know it's not going to rain. We have several openings on the Sister Cities Committee, so if anyone's interested in, in participating on that committee, get ahold of the Shawna Kozinski, and she would be able to get you an application for that, that committee. Also, in the last week, the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission met. Highlight of the meeting was the alternate now for the city of Kettering is the mayor, and she did attend that meeting with me, and at the end of the meeting, I'm, I want to announce, I was re-elected to the executive committee. So it's a pretty big deal. I've been on the board of directors for some time, and, and now I think this is my third or fourth term as on the executive committee. It's a, it's a great honor to be on that and, and represent our, our city, which is so important. Also, we, I know somebody will mention probably, because we had several council members and a mayor at the ribbon-cutting at the Flag Store last Friday, so someone talks about that, which leads into, it's always great to say, we want to bring new business to Kettering, we want to support the ones we have now. And I always talk about supporting business and shopping at our business, but I thought another way is, these businesses, a lot of them need to hire folks. So if you know somebody that's looking for a job, a youngster, one of your kids that's looking for work, send them out to a Kettering business, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clepass.
I want to just remark on something a lot of us are thinking about, which is Ukraine, that we're praying the war would be stopped, and that we have some people from Ukraine living in Kettering. I think that when you think about that on Tuesday, the United Nations said there's 2 million refugees, and they estimate that there will be another four, they estimate this number to reach 4 million refugees. I hope that Kettering is a place that, as these refugees are resettled, our city would be a welcoming place and a place that can help some of the Ukrainian refugees who have lost their homes and their country, as they've had to flee. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We're running it along this evening, so I'll dispense with any additional comments this week.
I am happy to announce that the Board of Community Relations completed the judging of our Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest, and our high school winner from Fairmont is Leah White, two runners-up, Joseph Wright and Giovanna Ferguson, and our middle school winner was Chloe Colini, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right. They all did amazing. We had wonderful, wonderful entries, so congratulations to them. We have our Juneteenth celebration coming up on June 20th. I'm hoping the Spasnoch rain is done by then. That will be at Poland Farm. We'll have lunch, speakers, live music, and we'll have tickets available online, and we're pretty excited about that. And I would also like to assure Mr. Clepass, all three of my children are on the payroll of Kettering businesses, all locally owned. That's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a, a comment regarding, Tony mentioned, most of us were at the, the flag and banner store on East Dorothy Lane, which now also is an Ohio wine store, and I talked to the[1727.81]
fourth term as on the executive committee. It's a great honor to be on that and represent our city, which is so important. Also, I know somebody will mention, probably because we had several council members and the mayor at the ribbon-cutting at the Flag Store last Friday, so someone talks about that, which leads into, it's always great to say, "We want to bring new business to Kettering, but we want to support the ones we have now." And I always talk about supporting business and shopping at our business, but I thought of another way is, these businesses, a lot of them, need to hire folks. So if you know somebody that's looking for a job, a youngster, one of your kids that's looking for work, send them out to a Kettering business. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipass.
I want to just remark on something a lot of us are thinking about, which is Ukraine, that we're praying the war would be stopped, and that we have some people from Ukraine living in Kettering. I think that, when you think about that, on Tuesday, the United Nations said there's 2 million refugees, and they estimate that there will be another four, they estimate this number to reach 4 million refugees. I hope that Kettering is a place that, as these refugees are resettled, our city would be a welcoming place and a place that can help some of the Ukrainian refugees who have lost their homes and their country, as they've had to flee. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We're running it along this evening, so I'll dispense with any additional comments this week.
I am happy to announce that the Board of Community Relations completed the judging of our Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest, and our high school winner from Fairmont is Leah White, two runners-up, Joseph Wright and Giovanna Ferguson. And our middle school winner was Chloe Kalini.